Our opening exercise is by Mrs. Powers.
Just wanted us to take a few minutes to remember the people actually over the holidays that we've lost in the school system. And some previous to that, we've lost several people and the teachers have mourned silence and say whatever we'd like to say within ourselves. Thank you. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
No approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, second by Mrs. Powers. To accept the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. All those in favor? Any votes? Motion passes five zero. Citizens comments. The first citizens' comments are reserved for comments on the items requesting approval in the agenda. Another opportunity is available for any subject at 5:15 PM and at the end of the business. Any citizens' comments?
No green cards?
The next item on our agenda is one of those good spots. We have an outstanding class at Citrus High School by Mr. Switek. And we need to make a presentation to Xander Jenkins for taking, recognizing him as a state winner in the fifth annual Congressional App Challenge. And it was sponsored by Congressman Daniel Webster. So if you would come forward, please.
Mrs. Switek, can you tell us a little bit about it?
Absolutely, you have to. So the Congressional App Challenge is a competition that is done nationwide for computer science students. And US congressmen have to opt into including their district in the competition. In the last several years, I believe this is year five of the Congressional App Challenge. In previous years, our congressman, Mr. Webster, has not participated. So we were very excited that this year was the first year he decided to participate. And we, as an academy, entered several different apps. And Xander had the best app in our district, district, I believe, is it 11? Here in the state of Florida, the US District 11. And Xander won for the entire District 11 in the state of Florida, which encompasses about three counties here in the state. And Xander now has the opportunity to travel up to Washington DC to compete in the National App Challenge at the US Capitol Building in March, which is just an amazing honor. And we are very proud of the work that Xander has put into the program. And we could not ask for a better representative of not only the Academy of Computer Science in Citrus High School, but Citrus County as well. So congratulations, Xander. We're very proud of what you've done.
And his certificate of recognition reads, "Citrus County School Board recognizes Xander Jenkins." It is with great pleasure that we recognize you as the winner of the fifth annual Congressional App Challenge, specifically for Congressman Daniel Webster, the 11th Congressional Officer. Signed by Superintendent Himal and myself.
Do you want to tell us who you brought today to support you?
So I've got Mr. Switek here, who is my teacher at the Computer Science Academy at Citrus High School. And I've also got my mom, grandma, and brother and Mr. Thompson from my school as well to come here and support me. And I feel like this is like, the fact that I'm getting to do this and I get to go and represent this district and my school and Mr. Switek and everybody in DC is really unreal to me. So I really am like, wow, this is really crazy. So I'm definitely happy to be doing it and I'm happy that I'm getting recognition for it.
Do you want to hear about Xander?
Absolutely.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Switek. What you're asking about is?
Alright, so my app is called, my app is called Color Scanner. And essentially what Color Scanner does is it, I can take a picture of anything or upload a screenshot or image of anything. And my app can pull any of the color values from anything on that image or picture. So like I could take a picture of, let's see this, something cool. That projector right there.
I was gonna say your shirt.
So, oh yeah, I do a shirt too. So I can do a picture of my shirt. And, oop, hold my flash on. And in the app, I can pull, if you guys can see, I can pull all the different color values on it. So all of the different blues and purples and navies that are in the picture. Hopefully you guys can see it well. The app pulls all of the different colors that are in that. So if I want to know like what sort of purple my shirt has, then the app can see that. And the accuracy is dependent on like the camera. But for an image that I have on my phone, it's completely accurate because it's a screenshot of it. So like if I open like Twitter on my phone, I'm gonna go, I don't know if we'll get good service, but oh well. And I take a screenshot of the Twitter and then I go back into the app. I can upload that screenshot if I can, hopefully it'll load. But I can upload a screenshot and basically see all the different colors or something. So if I'm like, oh, the little Twitter icon right there, that little button, what blue does Twitter use in their app? And if I click on that, that blue right there is the exact same blue that Twitter uses in their app. And it shows the RGB, the hex values, the brightness, all that stuff. So if I wanted to open up professional photo editing software and I wanted to make something that had the exact same blue that Twitter uses, I have all that information right on my phone. And I made this app because I was like, I do a lot of like web design and stuff in Mr. Switek's class. And I go from the computer at school to my iPad, to my computer at home, on my phone. Like I'm on a million different devices and I don't want to have to open up my code, look at what colors I did, open it up, do all this stuff just to know what color did I use? So I can just take a picture on my phone and pull up the website and screenshot on my phone and boom, I got all the stuff right there. So I kind of made the app out of like necessity for myself. Like I was like, I know that I personally, oop, I know that I personally will be using this app a lot and I have used it a lot. And so that's why I wanted to make it. And I thought, well, this is going to be something that's very difficult for me to do because I had to make algorithms to convert it from RGB to hex to back and forth and do all that stuff and render the image and get it to, a bunch of different stuff that was really hard and took me a long time to do. But I was like, this is feasible. Like I feel like I can do this. And when I finally was able to, I almost didn't even submit it because I had like a few really big glaring things in the app that I couldn't fix. And the app looked terrible and I was like, if I can fix this one issue, I'll clean it up and submit it. And I went through and I was like, okay, I fixed the issue. The image was like stretched and warped and rotated and I fixed it. And I was like, wow, I was like, it works. And I was like, it's go time. And I made it and I made it look pretty and I was able to submit it. So yeah, that's my app.
Awesome.
I think Zane was excited about his app.
I'm very excited about my app.
Travis Thompson in the background, who was one of my students at Citrus High School. But I think the article said that you're going to patent this.
Yeah, I'm going to eventually release my app on the App Store. I actually cannot become an Android developer until I'm 18, which does kind of suck. I'm like, I can't like publish my app. But I mean, it's not great. But obviously every single other teenager who's participating in the App Challenge, they've all made apps and none of them can publish them. So I'm going to work with Congressman Webster. He's never done this before, so he said that he doesn't know the exact process. But obviously all of the other congressmen have done this before for years. They know what it's about and we are going to get my app published. So hopefully soon, definitely sometime before March. I mean, I'd like to have my people use my app when I go and present it. But sometime before March, my app should be available to download on Android. So people should be able to download that sometime before March, so.
So if you make a telethonium buy on it.
I hope so too.
Mr. Mulligan, please say, at your graduation in a couple years, bring your business back to Citrus County.
Oh, that's a good question.
Thank you so much. You're making us very, very proud.
So tell us just a little about what you like most about the Computer Science Academy and that program there. Because it's a well-received, it's growing, it's continuing to thrive. So just tell us a little about that if you don't mind.
What I like most about the Computer Science Academy, I mean, there's pretty good teachers, there's Mr. Switek, there's tons of different stuff, there's cool classes to take. I get to take AP exams for it, which I think is really cool. Like they have AP exams for computers. Like that's kind of crazy. But I think the thing that I like the most is like the opportunity that we get from it. I mean, we have a whole bunch of stuff. We have tablets. I know we've got robots. I was able to test my app before I got it on my phone. I mean, it's a process to get it on my phone. I've got to export it. And it's a process to get it from the computer to my phone. But we have tablets in class, so I can just take it out and boop, scan it and test my app as I'm going through it on that. We have nice computers with double monitors, so it's easy for me to like work with. And like it feels like, I don't feel like I'm that limited as far as I want to do something, but I don't have the tools to do it. The Computer Science Academy gives me all the tools I need to make something really cool. And that's what I like most about it. There's, I have a lot of tools and I have things to work with and that's what I like most about it.
Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda is to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have approval, motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Mr. Thomas to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes five zero and now we will have recognition of donations.
Approve the $2,000 donation to Fernando Elementary School from Walmart Store 0509000. Approve the $510 donation to Ivenus Primary School from National Automobile Dealers Charitable Foundation. Excuse me, approve the $2,000 donation to Citrus Springs Middle School from Walmart. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School from Public Supermarkets Charities. Approve the $1,000 donation to Pleasant Grove Elementary School from Brennan Wheeler Gifting. Approve the $500 donation to Crystal River High School from Curry's Roofing. Approve the $500 donation to La Canto High School from the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Approve the $500 donation to La Canto High School from Joseph F. Bennett Senior Trust. And that's a total of $8,010 in donations.
And again, for the record, we could not support some of the programs we have in our schools and our classrooms without our community support. We thank them all. Next on the agenda is school support services. Ms. Switek?
Good afternoon. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
I move approval of the instructional and support recommendations. Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd. To approve the recommendations on the Goldenrod. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? We have a sidebar here too. So we have that motion this far.
Thank you.
You have them. Finance?
Good afternoon. I ask approval of budget amendment number three, which is amended as of November 30. And I bring this to you today. Copies had to be distributed today because due to the holiday, we didn't have anything posted in time to get it up on the website. The major things on this budget amendment, we were able to put some money back into the general fund because of the board match. Their insurance didn't go up. You know, we matched the increase in insurance, so we were able to save a little bit of what we budgeted there. We also were able to put some money back in the fund balance as we close out the last summer projects of the capital fund. The projects that they did, they finished those, so we were able to put some money back into the capital fund balance. So with that, I ask for approval.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes. The insurance board match decrease appropriation, and I think you just kind of mentioned that, but can you go over that one more time for me, please?
Okay, when we're doing our budgeting process, we budget, you know, X amount of dollars of what we're able to offer them for their board match. And the insurance increased only a small amount. So we only increased the board match to match that, which ended up being less than what we had originally budgeted. So, and then that also takes into account all the people who didn't take our insurance. You know, when we budget for open positions, the people who didn't take our insurance.
We have the budgets and everybody's going to take it because we have to have a budget.
So I guess it's extra money to go back into the fund balance?
Yes. Since we were, you know, we were dipping in about $5 million at the beginning of the year. So this is a little tiny drop back into the fund balance.
Typically, we have budget amendments before meetings so we can review them.
Yes, yes, no problem.
Closer and had a chance to review it somewhat, but that was my question. I think that's all I have.
Any other questions? How promotion? Okay, I have a motion to approve the budget amendment number three by Mrs. Powers, second by Mrs. Bryant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero.
I guess the next piece is me, the budget update. I just wanted to, you have the November cash and investments, those you did have in time. We did get an additional $38 million in December from our taxes. So, you know, a portion of that is general fund, a portion of that is capital. So we quickly moved those monies to invest them as best as we could. And so next month, you'll see the even better increase in our investments. I was really hoping the third calculation would come out last Friday. When I looked last year, it was on the 11th, so that would have been last Friday. It did not come out. It'll probably come out about 5:00 this Friday. So I'll be able to bring that to you next month. We are going, we are beginning the budgeting process, putting the calendar together currently, working with the different departments, HR mostly, on when we can push the budget through and schedule meetings with our administrators. So at the workshop, I'm going to bring you the budget calendar, just so you have an idea of where we are with everything. And we'll start working on 2021. Okay, so the auditors are here right now. They're hopefully wrapping up. Their due date is March 31st, so we should have the end of our financial audit. And next month, the internal accounts audit and the academy audit should be coming to the board. So those private auditors should be done by next board meeting. Any questions at this time about the budget or where we stand? Or we're just kind of starting with the new year? Okay, have a good evening.
Attorney DeGussis matters? Ask that we approve the minutes of the first school board meeting?
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Bryant, a second by Mrs. Powers. Right. We have a time certain for our discussion with Student Progression Plan. That's going to be at 5:00. And we have a time certain for citizens' comments at 5:15. So. Do you want to go to business? You want to go ahead and do our?
Yes, but we do have citizen comments now too, right after the closing business.
Well, we haven't closed it yet.
Well, I was just going down line in three minutes and then...
Yeah, I think we've come to the end of the agenda.
Yeah, end of the agenda, okay. No other green cards? No citizens' comments? No citizens' comments? You go to any other business to get that out of the way?
Yep.
Mr. Kennedy?
I've got a few things. Today, we opened up our legislative session. And so I'm trying to be very encouraged by the session. That's something I think we all need to do for our students and our staff. Yesterday, in committee, Senate Bill 1088. It's known as the Teacher Salary Enhancement Bill by Senator Diaz. It was voted out of its first committee, eight to zero or unanimously. It heads now to the Appropriations Subcommittee. And what I was pleased with is that senators on both sides of the aisle expressed support for Governor DeSantis and the legislature taking seriously the need to improve teacher education, um, teacher salaries. I was further pleased that Senator Diaz, in his closing statements, said that he respected local collective bargaining process, which he emphasized was our state constitutional requirement. But I thought that was important that he did say that and recognized the local control of that. He also referenced that as the bill moved forward, and there were a lot of comments about that, you know, this was the first start, you know, start of this, that we needed to recognize that there is a cost of living differential from district to district. We recognize that, you know, with our salaries from district to district. And so I think he was pointing towards, is there going to be a specific dollar amount that's being talked about? Or is it more of a funding model? So I look forward to seeing that. I proposed to our board that we're going to be going to Tallahassee here soon. This will be, I think, our last time to meet before we're up there. So if we want to give the chair direction to send a letter on our behalf to anyone, this would be the time. I think the only, I mean, I will be sending one individually if we don't send it collectively. But we could direct the chair to send a letter supporting funding, improving teacher and staff salaries. I mean, it could be very generic, it could be very open-ended.
But that's important if you please.
I think that's, to me, the emphasis, is that we look for them, we appreciate what they're doing, but we look for them to fund teachers and staff for, you know, all of our, you know, our staff members. So that's, I lift that up. We can talk, we can come back to that in a second. I want to move on to, I was at a SAC meeting yesterday at Citrus Springs Elementary School. Excellent SAC meeting. I was so appreciative of the stakeholders that were really giving a lot of feedback to the school and there was communication. One of the parts of the meetings now are to review the school improvement plan and to share those out at the meetings in the schools. They're developing some great, excellent expectations, but I felt that there was something missing. And I kept hearing Ms. Powers in my head.
That's a good thing.
It is a good thing. I went home and my wife said, you need to go and publicly share this and make Ms. Powers, or let Ms. Powers know that you did have a bit of an epiphany. So, and that is that as I looked over the expectations, the rigorous expectations that our schools have and they should have for our students and our staff, the public doesn't seem to understand that our kids are having more put on them, higher standards than ever in this, you know, really in our state and nation. We somehow keep thinking that school was the way it was when we were in school and that, you know, and it wasn't. So what I kept hearing was about the lack of mental health. We talk about it. We really do. But I did, I felt like there was a lot of high expectations in those school improvement plans. But now as we talk about that, well, now they're going to take five hours out for mental health training and they need to do this, need to do that. It's not for now, but I think it's a good conversation to have. How are we incorporating that mental health piece into the overreaching package? So I just lift that out. Ms. Powers, you, you know, don't ever think we're not hearing you. Because I really, I heard you in my head the entire meeting saying, but what about our mental health? What about the kids? What about the staff members? And this is a school that over the years has seen a lot. They've seen a lot. So I just kind of lay that down. EMT started at Crystal River High School this week. The EMR program has been improved to an EMT program. Ms. Stanley, Dr. Hebert, countless hours with Dr. Connors and also Ms. Mason. And I think some of you may have received an invitation on February 6th. They're going to have a celebration. And I'm seeing the name and so I'm feeling that we need to formally do something to ensure this name that is being used. I do ask formally and request that at our, that we have a special meeting at January 28th, 2020, which I suspect we will have as a result of the workshop, that we place on the agenda, naming the EMT program at Crystal River High School, the Phil Royal EMT Program at the Crystal River Academy of Health Careers. This has been already approved by the school SAC. But I think if we do this prior to their celebration, we can ensure that that that's done before the celebrations because I think that they are utilizing the name. And I think we want to make sure that that's...
I thought we already did it too. I thought Mr....
It wasn't a formal vote.
I know Mr. Dodd mentioned it, yes.
For the MOU, I went back and tried to find that too.
Is that something we can vote on right here and now?
I didn't know, Mr. West, if we had to put it on a future agenda. To formally name it. I figured we had to put it on a future agenda. So I would ask if there's consensus with the board if we can... Is it 24, 28, can you?
I suspect we'll make a special meeting.
Absolutely.
And did they finalize the February 6th date?
I believe it has been, the 6th has been finalized, I believe.
We are definitely working on it. There, it was something else scheduled that day and we're getting in contact with Lindsay Blair to make sure that that can be changed with the leadership of Citrus.
And what time of the day are we thinking?
10:00 in the morning.
Thank you. That's on February 6th?
And you know, I'm on the Rural Legacy Foundation. I assume that there would be contact with April Royal, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. If, once we finalize the date, they're going to do a flyer, like an invitation, that we will send, that we'll send out. And it's our expectation that we would invite, since it's, since we have the need in the county for EMTs and with all of the information that's been in the Chronicle, we would like to highlight the wonderful things that Citrus County Schools is doing with your guidance and leadership. And we would like to invite, like Representative Brazula, if he's available, Senator Simpson, and, you know, the local, of course, all of you to come and have kind of like a party and a celebration to kick it off. That would be our goal. And as soon as that date is formally in place, we will be sending out an official invitation. invitation to everyone.
And I just want to again, also share, Mr. Dodd, thank you for your influence on, on Phil Royal's foundation with, you guys have been really supporting that, that program. So, I know you've been influential in that, so thank you, sir. And that's all I have for now.
I was talking with Bill a while back, and what he was saying, not just the skills that he had as EMT or, or as a police officer, but he said the schools taught him how to get across his message, to be able to speak to people, how to give a speech. The schools taught him how to be able to write what he needed to get across to people. So, he recognized the entire person. You just weren't, you know, an EMT person, you weren't just a writer. You were all of these things together. And I, I found that very fascinating, and I appreciated the fact that he recognized the school system for doing that.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes. A couple things. I've been at a couple SAC meetings, had two of them yesterday. So, went from one to the next, but it's always good seeing the community and the parents at our SAC meetings and students, and, you know, so I appreciate that process. And then, next Monday, Martin Luther King Day. There's schools that day, there's different activities going on in the community for Martin Luther King Day. And Top Can Speech contests are coming up for judging.
I judged one. I judged one at McCanto Middle.
So, that's always a fun time. And then, Friday, we're at the elected leaders summit, sir, right on...
And I'm at FISBIT.
Okay, okay, you're at FISBIT. And I don't think superintendent's going to be there Friday either issue.
He is, I'm meeting in Tallahassee, I believe it's, on the Committee of Mental Health Committee.
She's on the Mental Health Committee, but stayed, yes.
So, is there anything that we need to discuss before we go to the summit on Friday?
One of the things I'm, I really am wondering that I think would be a good proposal, is, I think it's great that they have been hosting it, but I'd love to see that rotated. And I'd love to see the schools district be able to maybe host it, it's a WTC, and be able to highlight what we're doing. Because right now, we're having the, the college hosted by the county. It would be nice to rotate that a little bit, and maybe be able to have those opportunities to share, because last, it seemed like last year was all about this, you know, us. I mean, it was about workforce development, and what are we doing? And, and so, it would be nice to be able to then say, "Well, this is what we're doing." So, that's just a thought.
That's a thought. I know, I guess you, as council's chair, you go to that other meeting they have, where they have the chairman of each, the small group. Have you had that yet?
I haven't done an invitation.
I, I, the entire time I was chair, they didn't, because I kept waiting, and they kept getting re-scheduled.
They had it all the time when I was chair.
We're getting along better than we used to, too.
But it's a good, it's a good tool.
I think it's a great tool that chairs can be able to meet.
So, maybe, maybe we should bring that up at the summit.
It kept getting rescheduled.
Yeah. So, maybe, Ms. Council, as a chairman, maybe you want to bring that up at the summit on both the, both the small group leaders meeting, and also what Mr. Kennedy said about, you know, the...
Just rotating, I just think, you know, I mean, and we'd love to take the next rotation.
We don't want to step on any toes, because we have a very, very good relationship with them, that they like, because, you know, it involves the county commission, which is the entire county, but it also involves the two cities, which we have schools in. But we represent only the school population. We really...
And so, you see us representing everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all the taxpayers, right?
Yeah, but I'm saying that they, I don't want to step on any toes if they want to continue to run it.
I think Sandy has a good point, because it's going so well, and we're all working together so well.
I mean, if they want to give it up, we'd be willing to take it, but I can maybe handle that in a side question.
Yeah, I, I, my feeling though, is that cities have things they want to highlight. Each city does.
Yeah.
And I, I think that it's great that the county got this started, but, you know, really it's a great opportunity to rotate some of this. I think the cities would like to do it. I think that's gonna...
I don't know, Frank's retired.
We could do that, too. I think, you know, one of the things is, is that it, it does sometimes feel like it's the county show. And the idea is it's elected leaders, it's all of us. So, I think a way to do that is to rotate that, that around. I mean, if we're trying, we're wanting to just respect them, then I think then we're coming to a county meeting.
Well, actually, the truth is, the school system started this.
Yes, back in the day.
Yeah, and then the county picked it up, and we just sort of all went with the county, because they pulled in the cities. But the school system actually started the discussions.
That's right. Thanks. Forgot about that.
Well, I'll see if I can handle that, maybe.
Yeah, was it Commissioner Kitchen who first started it?
No.
We...
Before you and I.
Yeah, we brought up the desire to have it, and we had, I think, one meeting, and then Commissioner Kitchen said, "Oh, yeah, this, you know, let, let's do this." And so, he took the lead after that, but we, we had started it for one meeting, and then wanted to continue it, and they decided to continue it.
You were in one of your other roles when you did SCAP, you, you know, did things about the LeCanto complex way back when.
And then, the, the last thing I want to touch on is that, back in July, when I brought up the idea to have a presentation on the Phil Douglas Commission findings, and we've been working on that with Mr. Law, and Mr. Himmel, and Mr. Bishop, and with the sheriff's office to kind of have a coordinated effort to put on a program. And we are working on an announcement. Lindsay Blair's been working on that, that we're looking at a teacher workday on March the thirteenth, having a presentation. I've spoken with Sheriff Boulter, he's the chairman of the commission, and he's agreed to come up and lead the meeting. And so, in talking with our attorney, Mr. Bradshaw, he had mentioned that it would probably be a good idea just to notice it as a workshop. And there's going to be more information coming out, because we haven't, you know, set all the invitations, or made notice of everything, but it is in the, in the final process now. And so, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, and we'll see, you know, it will be a great opportunity for us to have the chairman here, and the chance for him to do the presentation, similar to what we've done at other locations at SBA. And have our personnel, administrative personnel, Mr. Law is going to be, I guess, tasked with, with that, and then have the law enforcement personnel there as well. So, stay tuned for more information on that, but it's been a coordinated effort. Sheriff's Office has been, you know, working on it, working together on it, and so I'm very pleased that we're able to come together.
That'd be something we'd have to do at Curtis Peterson, how we...
Yes, Curtis Peterson. It will be at Curtis Peterson.
Oh, March thirteenth.
March thirteenth. That's right.
And then, I just have to follow it up right now. Very small crowd for you, but I can't imagine the hours that you have spent bringing this information back to us. And you've done it at the state level, too, I think, two different meetings, so we're blessed with your presence.
Thank you. And, you know, like I said, it's, it's, we're in this together, and this board is, takes school safety, and superintendent takes school safety very seriously, and we're going to continue to do that at Sheriff's Office, and School Resource Officer Program, our Guardian Program, Alice, all those things that we've been in place. It's a good signal to this community that, you know, we want students to be safe at school, we want faculty members, employees to be safe at school, and we're going to do everything we can to provide for that safety. That's all.
Is it back? Well, I've got a conflict. And, and, and this counts is taking over for me tomorrow at LeCanto Primary School, because I can't be at the SAC, since I'm going to be at FISBIT. So, she's covering for me there. Thank you, Ms. Council. I appreciate that. I'm going to FISBIT Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Friday afternoon. And the next week, I've got Crest. I can go to Crest. I can go to Crest SAC, because it's three thirty, and then I go to Tallahassee the next day. I'm going to miss the Christopher Middle School, and I can't get anybody to cover, because Charles is going to be in Tallahassee, but we're just going to miss that one. What's that, Wednesday? Uh, that's Thursday. Thursday, yeah. It sounds like a stop-down good time. They've got food and drinks, and want everybody there, and I said, "I told them last time I wasn't going to be able to be there."
They should have moved the meeting.
They should have moved the meeting. That's okay. That's easier here than there. Anyway, that's on Thursday, too, but, oh, well, yeah.
Well, I'm just going to bring up Friday about the meeting that we had with, with towns and with county. We've already talked a bit about that, but I'm really looking forward to it, because ideas, good ideas always come out. Thomas, you always bring us up, interesting ideas to share with everybody. And I, I'm so pleased that we worked together, because we can all remember a time when that did not happen.
Yes.
And it wasn't...
You can remember them.
And it wasn't nearly as much fun as working together and getting things done. And there's some things that we're going to bring up, about transportation, one thing, but other ideas, and talk, and see if we actually can get something done. That, that's the point. It's not just to talk about it and say, "Oh, that's, put it in the notes, we talked about it." No, it's to say what we want to get done, and then do it, get, get a plan available to do it. So, we're going to be working on that on Friday, so I'm looking, looking forward to that. I think that's about it.
Okay. All right. I've been a little busy, too. I had my SAC meeting at LeCanto Middle School, and what I was impressed with was, first of all, again, the student improvement plan was very consistent, and they even had their stats on to-date accomplishments. But then they did, they get, they got into their grants, and they, they presented four, and every one of the four were cross-curricular. The media specialist is doing a poetry unit, and she's going to teach them orienteering. And I said, "Well, if they had a problem, they just called those little ROTC guys over at the other school and have them come over and explain it." And I remember when Christopher High School had, we had an orienteering contest, it was years ago, and we won. It was up in Georgia, and it had snowed. And one of our, one of our cadets lost a shoe and continued running in the snow to help us win. So, I said, "Orienteering is, is something that's, that's really cool." And I'd never thought of a middle school doing it. A lot of them were all cross-curricular. I'd like to see that in the schools, because it says, "Well, you can read a poem, but you better know math." And she's going to shift things around in the media center, so that they have to use their, their compass and their directions, and their, the number of feet to, to find a book. It's really kind of cool. So, that's that. We also have a couple announcements from the community. I'm on the Afro-American reading, and Mrs. Bryant reads there every year. But anyway, I brought a couple flyers for everybody. But we have several of our students right now from LeCanto High School, Christopher High School, LeCanto Middle School, Forest Ridge, and Southern Rivers, I think, are all participating in, in youth reading. So, that's going to be February twenty-third, from two thirty to four thirty at the conference center at CF. And it is, it's a wonderful presentation. Mr. Bellamy's not going to be there to do this Martin Luther King speech, but there's another gentleman that does a pretty good job, that nobody will ever replace Mr. Bellamy. But anyway, I brought these for you to, to just kind of pass around to the schools that you go to, because we're going to be well represented there. The other thing that the kids are doing is, the Legal Women's Voters is having a hundred year anniversary for the self-defense movement and the passage of the amendment, and that's going to be August twenty-second of 2020. So, they're already planning for next year. And the chorus is at Citrus High School with Bonadell, and Christopher High School with Mark Garlock are going to provide the National Anthem and two songs, so they're going to be on the agenda, too, but that's going to be something else. So, I like the idea that the community is asking us to get the kids to participate. And our kids are coming up with it, so. Other than that, I'm looking forward to Up For Bound on Wednesday morning. I'm looking forward to going to Tallahassee and saying, "Thank you for what we got, and this is what we want." And hopefully get it funded. And then, we'll come back, and we're going to have a wonderful celebration when we get back from Tallahassee on Friday called the Galaxy of the Stars, where we recognize our teachers and our support people of the year, and that's, that's probably one of the nicest evenings that we spend, when peers recognize peers. It's a great thing. So, other than that, then we'll move to a workshop, and I've got a question to ask. I got a call, and this is probably, I got something to hand on the side, since I got your attention. I had a call from Mr. Stoney about our workshop. And at one time, we thought it was going to be a lengthy workshop, and maybe we should have lunch, but now, one of those discussions has been canceled from PACE, right? And so, I was still anticipating lunch. Are we talking on the twenty-eighth? The twenty-eighth.
When are we going to start? That's probably the, I mean, how long do we think it's going to be?
We're doing state and district.
State and district.
But they all had other things in the morning. I thought school safety was part of the morning workshop.
Safety was, yes, safety we thought was going to take all morning. I thought we were going to start at nine.
I can't imagine you would not be here until lunch.
Okay.
Ms. Adele's telling me there'll be some...
Expulsions.
The weed expulsion.
And then we're going to have another special meeting. Okay, so my next question is, I will get a menu and a time that you would like it delivered. We're going to have it in the upstairs conference room, or down here?
It's your choice. Tell us when.
We did it up there the last time. It was pretty nice. Okay, I'll get a menu choice, and then I'll text you all. I have Mrs. Adele, Franda, text you what you want for lunch.
Start at nine o'clock, right?
Start, I, I start at nine.
Just the lunch upstairs.
Just the lunch upstairs. Workshop down here, lunch area.
Do you want to notice the lunch, just in case, since we're having it here and all is going to be together? Just...
Well, can I, it'll be on the agenda, I guess?
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
I mean, just in case there was, you know...
No question.
Yeah.
Okay. And, does anybody want to take a guess? What time do you want lunch? Twelve, twelve-thirty, one?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah, I was just...
Absolutely. All I know is the last time Mr. Stoney made us lunch, I had to have a box to take home. Okay, I will touch base with him and then get back with you on that. I don't have anything else. I think we're right with this time. We'll take a short recess. Resess until five, well...
Yeah, the public hearing at five.
Public hearing, well, with, until five fifteen, and then we'll open the public meeting at five. Okay?